That has been called to discuss the place and fire wellness plans. And we have a whole bunch of information for us here. And what I'm going to, we're going to ask each of the chiefs, we'll go down to page twenty-four as the, I think the police one starts and then the fire starts on twentys- twenty-nine. So Chief, if you could walk us up and what's presented there, is that basically what you're still requesting, correct?
Let me find it. For the most part, as far as the PD goes, there are certain components of the health and wellness program that we have funded through other means. Specifically, the physical fitness side of things with officers having access through our SRO contract. So that part of the program wouldn't necessarily be something that we're looking at right now because that's taken care of by other means. Other than that, yes, pretty much the program itself is what I'm looking at.
Pretty much the same thing. Nothing's really changed. Kind of out of the loop exactly on expenses and stuff. I don't know what the expectations are. I guess, I mean, I know the ballpark figures we have listed, I don't know what you're looking for. As far as the physical fitness portion, I do have some ideas of a way to keep the costs down. If anything goes through, we can work on that. But as far as the mental health side, completely green and don't have any understanding of what we can do or what we need to do. But I do want to look into that and seeing how we can make it useful for our department. It would be very difficult with the volunteer department, I understand that, but it's definitely something I would be interested in going forward with.
Yeah, I have a few questions about how, and I think that's kind of where we got hung up a little bit too, is how to handle, you know, the volunteer fire department and to match programs up here. Just one question, as long as you're talking dollars. On page thirty-one, under your approximate expenditures, you just have training, a thousand dollars. What was that?
I was hoping you were going to answer that.
Oh, okay.
I will. I will answer that.
Okay.
So the thousand dollars that was put in there initially for the fire department was something very similar to what was with the police department.
Okay.
Which was bringing in somebody, you know, it's an estimated cost, but bringing in an external trainer, something like that, to go over specific things that firefighters see. So whether it's coping mechanisms, somebody on maybe the mental health to teach them coping mechanisms, or something on the physical side to say, okay, you guys have repetitive up and down movements with different things, so we're going to bring in somebody on the physical side to teach you exercise type things that can help you to kind of build up those muscles so that you're less apt to injury and stuff like that. So that's what that training would have been.
Okay. Some of the differences now, one, you're still expecting that the officers would be able to go to the fitness center while they're on duty during off-peak times. Is that still in your request?
Correct. So if I can, I can kind of talk through some of this with you.
Yep.
So the way the program, I have it set up with, starting with the physical side, was it was the fitness center which we've taken care of. The other side was the training, bringing in somebody to talk about just our overall physical wellness. And then the last component of the physical health was the accessibility to utilize the fitness centers while on duty. Now, the use of that fitness center while on duty, however, was in connection with their lunch breaks that they would take. So these would be times that they would have the ability anyways to, whether it go home and eat or do whatever, they would be utilizing this time to work out. It would have to be in the off-peak times. Usually, the guys would use it in the middle of the night or when somebody else is on, which usually never happens. So we'd be looking at the guys working the overnights. They would still be subject to call. Wouldn't be something where they're able to completely, you know, change into workout clothing or do stuff like that. It's going to be a matter of taking their belt off, taking their, you know, vest and stuff like that off, maybe lifting some weights and doing some, you know, stuff like that. Sitting on the treadmill for an hour is not going to cut it, you know? It's just not one of those practical exercises and they understand that and they know that. So they would utilize their break times in order to do this. The same principle applies to the, on the spiritual side of things, when we got down to that part with church. So, or I shouldn't say church, whatever worship service or, you know, faith that they followed, if they had a service here in the area, they would be allowed to use their breaks to attend those services. It was specifically written in that if officers wished to attend a church service or their worship service, they could not work out in the same day. They have, they set time by contract for their breaks and that was the time allotted that they needed to use for that.
If an officer were at the fitness center there and say pulled a muscle or something, would that be on their worker's comp or is that under their personal?
So, you know, some of the information that Chief Goldstein provided, I believe they have a, I kind of looked through it a little bit, looks like they've got a waiver or stuff like that for it. I think that's certainly something that we, you know, could put into, you know, put into place if there's an injury associated with that workout. I mean, I can't a hundred percent answer that question. You know, if I go to my house and I slip and fall and crack my head open and I'm going on lunch break, is that work comp or is that me? And I don't know. So that one is more of an attorney thing. I'm sure that if, with that type of a scenario, we can probably have that release form done that one says you're physically capable of doing this, but two, that any injury arising from it is not a work comp claim. That's more of an attorney question.
Okay. And getting, Andy now, getting to how this affects some of the, you know, the volunteer fire fighters. Would they, if they go to the fitness center, they're on their own time, correct? Is that?
Yeah, we're basically on call twenty-four seven, so it's going to be on their own time. It wouldn't be a paid.
But you're not, they're not getting paid for it, but an officer technically would be getting paid if he or she during their break time.
Correct. Yeah, this is strictly on their own time, like they would be doing it now, you know, still, if they go to the workout center, at this point, it's on their own time.
And your firefighters are okay with that? They understand that there's those differences?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, and it's basically, it's a volunteer basis to attend. It's, at this point, it's not mandatory. They must go, I have approximately twenty firefighters instead. Yes, they would take advantage of it if given to them.
Okay. Have we addressed the tax issues that if this is a benefit to the individuals, how is that treated? That's?
We have not. I was just briefed on this today. So by the time I got done being briefed on it, it was past hours of anyone being open.
Okay. And which, well Spooner probably, well, he kind of mentioned that in here.
That's actually a question I have on here though, if that would be treated as income.
And then my last question would be to Ron, well, I guess we have Pastor Bob here too who'll talk about the chaplain thing here too. But Ron, now again, your department, your, your public works employees are expected to maintain a certain level of physical fitness, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would they appreciate being able to go to the fitness center on their, their own time to maintain their, their level of fitness if they don't have a gym at home?
The policy that we already have, I guess if I want to or any of the, go to the fitness center, I think, you know, as long as you go there, the required number of times, I think it's like nine dollars a month. I guess if they can't pay that, well, then.
Yeah. Okay.
So at this time, I don't think that's a necessity for the public works, no.
Okay. Yeah. One of my concerns is how we're treating different classes of people differently and in some cases, we're required to treat them the same. Chaplain, Pastor Bob, you provided a nice little written thing here. What's your take on?
Speak for me.
There, so, yeah, we are recording this, aren't we? Yes, we are, yep.
Name?
Right there, yep. Name?
Yeah.
Pastor Bob, Nantos Grace Church. Okay. So I was asked by Alicia to just throw some bullet points out on the importance of training area pastors for chaplaincy. And I've had some chaplaincy background, I've also talked to Chief Paul Waitner about this. And, you know, the biggest thing I'm going to do that's not in the email, when I graduated from college, I had a four-year degree in psychology and youth ministry. I did not have a child. I was married for about two years. I thought I knew how to parent because, man, I had a bachelor's degree, okay? I wrote a lot of papers on parenting. And I hit into a church as a youth minister and I started picking, don't do this by the way, I would highly not recommend this, picking out parents, well, they're going to be way off and they're going to be off. And then eventually, my wife got pregnant and had our child, I didn't know jack squat about parenting. It's just a way to say that, you know, we have pastors that are trained either with a four-year degree, not all pastors in ordination types of levels and all do require graduate degrees, so we're running into pastors without graduate degrees, different levels of training that does not require graduate degree work, and we still don't know when we get into these tense situations. I mean, they're very tense. I was twenty-eight years old and I have very vivid memories of it. I was thrown right into a workplace shooting. It happened basically across the street from the church. I was there. I was not ready for it. By the grace of God, I survived. And Sheriff Jim Conley is retired now, if he's still alive in Florida, in Fillmore County was a sheriff, and him and I were immersed into a setting that just, you don't want anybody to be immersed into. We had six months of meetings with the community because it was a four-hundred-and-ninety-seven populated town. And, you know, we didn't know what we were doing, but by the grace of God, we did it and those meetings were needed and we realized the importance for training. It's just needed. Police officers need to, troopers, deputies, all, they need to trust their pastors. And they, they need that and they need an opportunity to have that. So we need some training to build trust with the pastors and the police officers right here. Because they're going to trust their lives, we're trusting our lives. There's a huge level of trust that's needed there. There will not be any cooperation or working, I'm not being rude, it's just the way the human people work if there's not trust. That's just life. And then also coming from a Christian faith perspective, just me personally, I think that God expects professionalism. I think he wants, God wants biblical backing, you know, and biblical teaching, but God also expects professionalism. If I'm not doing that, I'm not going to cut it. That's just a quick synopsis. It's very, very important and it really, really, really helps. Concerns? Comments? The, the amount that's plugged in here, does that look to be enough to cover the training that's necessary to have? You want my ideal, I mean, you want me to go the sky's the limit? You know what I mean? Realistically. Okay. I think that that amount is enough for a couple of days, but I think we need to be doing, and I'm saying this right here, providing I have the time, it's done right, we need to have ongoing settings with our officers that are just built to build trust and engagement with each other. I don't know how much training that requires, but we need to be there. Officers get thrown under the bus every time they go on duty. And firefighters, okay? And idealistically, I would like to create a setting, and you can't force this on anybody, they have to choose, where those officers, you know, they have a high call. The first officer in the scene for the burning trailer had to get a, okay? They can say, you know what, I'm going to talk to Pastor Brad or I'm going to talk to Pastor Jim, I'm going to talk because I got to, I got to work through this. So some ongoing voluntary settings like that, that I don't see charges for, we just are there. That's part of us being your pastor on top of that because trust doesn't happen overnight. So I added a little more to it that I would be interested in, but I don't think we should be charging for that. We would just create some settings where if the officers are interested, can happen. And just some meetings. That's all, in a smaller setting.
Thank you.
Hi.
Alicia.
Yeah, I think that the chief actually had some, I don't know if it's in here, but he had gotten some praise quotes on the training option and I believe he was also working with the Stearns County Sheriff's Department to see if they could bring somebody in to do training for several agencies. So as far as the chaplaincy program, I think, you know, like Dave Ventura said at the LMC regional meeting, that that is a first step that cities can take that doesn't require a lot of financial or time commitment. And I think that that as well would be a great first step for us as a community. But on the whole, I'm really in support of Chief Wagner's and Chief Sonny's wellness programs that they've put together. I think that, I think it's important for the health and well-being of our employees that, you know, like Bill mentioned in his emails, this tough job market and for the sake of retaining the, the employees and the volunteers that we have invested in, I think it's worthwhile to consider this. That's what I've got.
Neil?
Yeah, I'm not against it, I guess. It's, I can't, hopefully, we aren't going to have a need for five or six sessions per employee, but we already had one or two, so when these incidents happen, it would be good to have a program for it.
Sean?
Chief Wagner or maybe even Pastor Bob, can somebody tell me more about how we think the chaplaincy program is going to work? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it appropriately, we're not. We do have, I know there was an opinion by the labor attorney that was worrying about the constitutionality of such a program and I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page of how this works and forced participation or not and all those things.
So I'll start and then Pastor Bob can enter in. So, a couple of things with the chaplaincy program. Some of this is an evolving kind of a program. Stearns County Sheriff's Office, the Stearns County Chiefs Association are in the process of doing a global, more kind of global chaplaincy program within Stearns County. What that means is we are looking to each individual entity and community to have pastors or establish their own chaplaincy programs that all agencies within this county can utilize for resources. So when we look at the, the training aspect of it, we are looking to hopefully bring in somebody to be able to train all the pastors and the individuals who are involved in ministry who wanted to take part in the chaplaincy program, bring them in to train. That cost is a hundred and ninety-five dollars per person plus travel. So if the city of Painesville had two pastors, the recommendation is that they would have two pastors and the individual running the chaplain program, attend that training. So for Painesville, we'd be looking at maybe six hundred dollars in expense. The travel expenses, as somebody who's part of the Chiefs Association with Stearns County, I'm actually going to try and present that, that the association paid for that, you were probably looking at a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. When it comes to the chaplaincy program in general, this is not a preaching faith-based thing. These are, these are individuals, pastors, people in the ministry that can come out and assist us when needed. So when we have to go out and do a death notification to a family, whether it's a car accident or something like that, they're, you know, we may be leaning on them, they're going to come with to be that kind of consoling individual. So, you know, I go to Betty's house, let her know that her husband was just killed in a work-related accident, I don't have three hours to sit and counsel her. You know, we have other things to do, however, we've called on one of our chaplains to be able to come and sit with her and maybe talk with her, talk through these different things with her. If the conversation goes to, you know, faith-based stuff because she takes it there, then yeah, it's going to go there. But the reality is, is there, there is a listening ear and somebody to help comfort them, not as somebody who's going to go preach to them and save their soul. When we look at situations like the trailer park back in July, okay? We did have a pastor come out in that situation to help deal with the family. We have a major investigation to work with. They're the perfect ones to be able to help kind of run interference, help that family understand what's going on while we conduct what we need to do. So that's kind of the outside part, the external side. The internal side would be, you know, once a month, once every couple of months, sitting down with the guy saying, hey, you want to go get lunch? Sure. How are you doing? You know? How you doing? And just talk and build rapport. That way, whether it's faith-based, faith-based or not, if they're struggling with something, they've got somebody they can reach out and talk to and say, you know what, I'm really struggling trying to understand why what happened in the trailer park would happen. Maybe it doesn't need the, you know, a psychologist to help, but maybe they're just struggling with the why and it gives them somebody to talk to. Everything as far as the faith-based stuff or the spiritual side of things, if you will, in this program is one-hundred percent voluntary. None of the guys in my department have to ever sit down with a pastor to have lunch if they don't want to. There is a devotional, if you will, component to it. It is more about, you know, how to live as a person in general, how to deal with life in general. The devotionals are not, you know, basically preaching-based or preaching any faith. It's a, you know, hey, let's talk about whatever. The first one that was ever done was to get an idea of what they were going to look like conceptually was about how you stay positive. That is an opt-in program, not an opt-out program. So if you don't want it, you don't get it. You don't have to have it. It's not forced on you. It's not anything that you're required to do. It doesn't affect your employment, it's just an option to try and help make you a better person. Now, when Belinda and I talked about it, I shouldn't say better person, just help you in general to be overall healthy. When Belinda and I talked about it earlier today, I explained to her, if this is something the rest of the city staff want to opt into as well, absolutely. You know, there may be law enforcement components to it, but if it's something that they would like to see as well, absolutely, they're more than welcome to it. It's not anything to keep from them. So I guess, I don't know if you've got anything else to add?
The only thing that I would add that's really key to this, Sean, you had a great question. Last thing I want is somebody grabbing me and saying, you know, do you know where you're going if you die or proselytizing or just forcing that upon. Biggest issue for training. You hearing me? That's part of training. Because there are individuals out there who think they have the key to the success of the world and everybody else needs to. I'm serious, it goes their way. I've, I've seen them, I watch them and I approach them. We need training so we don't get into that situation. And we understand the sensitivity of saying, I'm here for you and what you want to believe, not my agenda forced down you.
So can I just ask a couple of follow-ups on that?
Yeah, you got it.
I think as I understand the concerns from the city's labor attorney, excuse me, was spending city money on sending ministerial staff to essentially a theology course?
Okay.
And I'm assuming that the training you're talking about is different than a theological base. Can you describe how it might be different or maybe Chief, somebody knows the answer better than that?
Yeah. So in the packet I gave you, it specifically talks about the training. So the chaplaincy training, the basic course includes an introduction to law enforcement chaplaincy. It's domestic violence, officer injury, death and ceremonies, managing stress and critical incidents, law enforcement family, ethics and confidentiality, starting a chaplain program, unity in the midst of diversity, suicide awareness and death modifications.
So it's safe to say that we're not paying to send our ministers to some form of additional ministerial training?
This, that is correct. This is not about anything with faith-based. This is teaching the pastors my side of the world. Getting them to understand what we deal with and some of the things they're going to see out there as a chaplain.
I risk sounding redundant. A theology course by definition is the study of faith. Period. You with me?
I'm with you.
Okay. We're talking about specific training to help our officers shine so that they have the training and the support and the trust when they're in the field. And we do too. Not theology. Theology is a study of faith. This is helping people shine in the line of duty so we can give them everything they can so they don't burn out and they're there for us in a professional way and they have the support. You guys all know when Willie and Gloria Shields were murdered, okay? And the United Methodist Church, we have a support system that is not mandatory because you're not going to fire somebody because they don't want to go to a support system. You're going to fire them because they don't take care of themselves. You with me? And that week in my life was holy week in the Christian church. So I have one of the biggest high-profile media-centered funerals ever. I also have Good Friday service, Holy Thursday service, Easter Sunday, multiple services, and I was spent. I mean, they said I was running on period adrenaline. One of the reasons, not the only reason, one of the reasons I made it through that week was because I have a support system that I can call at any time that our other ordained ministers have been through that before. And they told me, here's what you're going to expect, here's some things to stay away from, here's some things to really hit hard. Is that helpful?
It is. And then just one last one and briefly, I don't, whatever. How would you describe your role as different as that Easter Sunday preaching minister versus the police chaplain? How are those two things different?
Sure. When I'm in a crisis situation or a DOA, a death, I'm there for the person I'm ministering to, which is the officer in the family. You with me? Or the people directly affected. When I'm on Easter Sunday service, I'm preaching out of a Christian faith-based message, okay? The separate of that is, there's somebody here that's been thrown under the bus in ways that I don't even understand the shoes sometimes they walk through. But I want to be here to love them. If they want, I want to give them support in ways that they would request, not throwing on them. And I want to help them through the next few minutes and hours of the insanity that they're experiencing.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Couple of things. This is more basically on the mental health part of it. Who decides who can go after an incident?
Who decides who can go?
Yeah.
So there's a couple of things you got to look at when it comes to the mental health, okay? So take the situation like back in, in July, okay? That is a clearly identifiable critical incident. The stuff in here as far as going to the mental health professionals have absolutely nothing to do with those critical incidents.
It says it does.
No, it can help, it can help with those. These are about, because in law enforcement, the critical incidents for us are easy to identify, okay? Those situations, you know, whether it's somebody who responds to, you know, a SIDS baby and maybe has a new child himself, so it really hits home with them. You know, the fire that took place earlier this year, the Shields case, a horrific accident, you know, something, a mass shooting, those types of things. Those are incidences that you can identify and say, there's clearly a critical incident here, we need, you know, we need to bring in a crisis or a critical incident, a stress management team like we did in July, for those people who are, you know, suffering or having issues with this, to be able to talk through, help debrief on this and just generally as those individuals involved work through this together, those people that were there that need it. This program is about being preemptive with people's health because the other part of our job is, it's not the critical incidents that eat away at officers, it's the compounding stress from the day-to-day routines, you know, whether it's the non-stop dealing with other people's problems. You know, whether it's the non-stop dealing with other people's problems, stressors at home, personal life, stuff like that, that compound and build up in officers. So this, with the police department anyways, with this program, my guys would most likely be required to go once a year, which would require the city to pay for their time and obviously for the service. The second time would be an optional opportunity if they felt they needed to go.
Okay. Back at the beginning of this, when you first brought this out to us, you brought up the thing with the July and the fire and we need this for that, we need this for that. My question was, who decides who can go? So does an officer have to ask you or Chief Andy to go to after a critical incident?
In this policy, no. They wouldn't need to ask. So the way this is written up, say one of my guys was struggling and they needed to set an appointment. They would simply set an appointment. They'd go down, talk to them and the city would get the bill.
So nobody knows?
Correct. We get a, these bills come with a number. They would come with a number for the individual that lives. So we would get a bill saying that number 152, and certainly somebody in the city is gonna know that 152 is an actual person. You know, whether that's a city administrator or somebody else. So they will know that 152 went down as part of the loneliness program and saw a doctor so-and-so. We will get the bill and that's all we will get.
So... After a critical incident, and the cost doesn't bother me because I've been in critical incidents, the city could get 25 bills. And nobody would know until the bill came in.
They could.
I like the idea that they don't have to talk to the chiefs because somebody, sometimes people don't want to. Um, I don't like the idea that they don't have to talk to anybody or at least let somebody know they're spending city money. Whether that be an administrator or something like that. But that was answered those two questions. My other thing was, um, everybody can think about that one. Everybody, everybody's talking about volunteering, not harming the employment. That one's gonna have to be really careful. And that one, I would just say that the chiefs would have to make sure when they're talking to people that they don't put that into the equation.
What are you referring to?
That's just a, that's just a opinion. All I'm gonna say is you gotta make sure you don't put it in the equation.
What are, what are you, what are you trying to say or what are you sharing or you missed the first half?
Yeah, I guess. I'm gonna just...
On the volunteering, when, um, all this is volunteer, right? And you said it's not gonna harm their employment if they don't do it.
Correct.
All I'm saying is we have to make sure that it doesn't.
Oh, absolutely.
That's all that question was, just make sure.
Yes.
Because that will put you in another world.
Oh gosh, no, that would open us up for all sorts of problems.
Would have to check on if you're paying somebody to do something, they get hurt, it's a workers' comp-related issue. Um, so you have to check on the workout thing during time. I, I'm not, I've been through workers' comp more than probably anybody would wanna know. But, um, that would be a thing to check on. I don't know what the answer is on that, but if you're paying people to, on the job and they get hurt, I've never won a case yet. Cause they won't, it's, they're getting hurt on the job. That's why you pay workers' comp insurance support. But them are the only things I have.
As I think if you're punched in, you're gonna be, it would be comp, whether you're at the fitness center or in the squad car.
Well, here I could try getting a sandwich.
Same thing.
Well, I do have one more thing. Who's paying for this?
You're punched in, you're worked, you're worked.
I'd like to know who's paying for it.
So I have to skedaddle to another meeting?
Oh, okay. Yep.
I've got it.
I think, I think you're good. You know, as far as that concerned, I'm not worried about the ACLU signing attorney up here to tell us to shut down the chaplaincy program. Uh, that's, that's one of the least of my worries.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, is East Department paying for this out of their funds or is the city kicking in over the top?
This was budgeted in the police department's stuff.
And right now there's an added to the budget for fire department as well at this point.
So to, to answer so many questions, because I do have the city employment stuff that was sent out. So there's a liability waiver in here. Um, it says, basically there's a signature or a part in here that says that they understand that the use of the equipment may expose them to inherent risks, including injury, accidents, illness and even death. Uh, they understand that the training and exercise equipment is completely voluntary and not part of their job requirements. It goes on later to say that, uh, the undersigning consideration of being allowed to use the training and exercise equipment hereby releases the city of Plymouth, its elected officials, employees, agents and insurers for all claims, property damage, personal injury and death resulting from the use of the facility, any equipment or the undersigned, unsigned presence at the facility, whether or not caused in whole or part by negligence and typical stuff. So, this, you know, when I look at our program, while this is the first I've seen the Plymouth stuff, there is a lot of crossover between the two. A lot of the things that are in our program are specifically written into any component of the city of Plymouth. The city of Plymouth allows our officers, much like ours says, to use their breaks to be able to work out in, in the city's provided facility. We obviously don't have that, which is why we have the fitness center. So when I look at it, I have no doubt in my mind that Chief Goldstein has thoroughly vetted this through their attorneys to make sure that everything that is within their program is more than, you know, above board. If they've got a waiver saying, "Hey, if you get hurt, it's on you, not on us." You know, that'll be for the courts to ultimately decide whether or not that's the case, but I would suspect that signing that waiver would certainly protect the city. And I will just add, when it comes to the physical fitness part of this and the working out on duty, all of these things that we're talking about within this program, these are not abnormalities. Guys working out on, on duty, those happen across the board in agencies across not just the Minnesota, but the US. Officers attending church services on their breaks, that also is not some unique thing. There was a chief in an agency that was working over deer hunting weekend in this county that went and spent time at church. There have been troopers that have spent time at church while on duty. Uh, there are other agencies I know of that have done the same thing. So nothing that's being proposed is outside of what is standard practice and has been standard practice in agencies throughout Minnesota.
Do all those agencies have, uh, let's see, how do I phrase that? Are they? I think I know the answer to this, but they're not all similar to ours and that we only have one on duty at a time, correct?
Um, some of them actually are.
Some, yeah.
Yeah. So like, uh, some of the agencies, you know, you start talking Plymouth, yes. Those agencies, um, no, they've got clearly plenty of other officers on when it comes to the working out and the stuff like that. Um, but even in their policies, it states, "You will do this only when time, you know, affords you the ability to do it." And much like ours, uh, you know, even if my guys were to take part in any of this, the minute a call comes in, they're dropping what they're doing. I don't care if they're in the, you know, middle of the pastor's, you know, sermon, it's up and out and they go, you know, it's just, they still are responsible to the job first. They're just able to, they would be able to use their, their break times to participate in these activities.
I, I have no problem with them, you know, doing what they want, you know, on the break with the understanding that they're going to possibly have to drop everything, but it's a lot easier than dropping a sandwich at McDonald's or something than to get your stuff back on and head out. But and again, it's probably not gonna happen that often, often anyway. Like I said, I have, I have no concerns about the, the chaplaincy program. ACLU has got better things to worry about than knocking on our door. The ones that I do have are workers' comp, the, uh, the tax, um, issues and how we treat different classes of employees working under the union system that we have. And then we keep talking about the fitness center. This would also apply to SNAP too or whatever. If another one were to come in, you know, LA Fitness, not likely, but if another one were to come in, they qualified to. They could go wherever they want.
Through the fire department currently, things we discussed prior, relatedly, we had talked to SNAP Fitness and then they proposed that we buy like three memberships or five memberships and then we all just share cards. The owner of SNAP Fitness in Painesville is willing to do that. And then you just have cards at the fire hall and, you know, we would pick it up, drop it off, things like that. It would be access to anybody at that point on the fire department, obviously.
Okay.
And as far as the PD goes, we have our agreement with the school.
Yeah. So I can understand that.
You would go to the school only or have to get your own membership?
I'm gonna go back onto the critical incident because I think one of it is probably the biggest, uh, the best thing you have going in here. Because that's probably the biggest lack, thing we have lacking. Everybody can work out if they want to. Everybody can go to church if they want to, but a critical incident affects more than anything else. The last paragraph about the spiritual health, and maybe Sean can help me on this one here, says, "If an officer's involved in a critical incident, the officer may request additional services and resources." But you said he didn't. All he has to do is make a phone call. "In the event of a critical incident, the department will make efforts to bring in resources to debrief the incident. Any requests for additional resources will need, will need to be made to the chief of police or chief of fire department." There again, we said they didn't. Correct? Am I reading that wrong?
No, you're reading that right and I'm glad you came back to it because I wanted to do so as well. I... That's how I read it, Chief, is that something over two and they have to make a request.
Correct, correct. And, and, and when you've got, so the program itself affords a, um, an employee two times a year to go down and meet with, um, a psychiatrist or psychologist, whoever it is, you know, therapist, whoever they go down to talk to, okay? It affords them that ability paid for by the city. It doesn't have to be critical incident-based. It could be for anything. If there's a critical incident and they require additional services, that would be something that they would need to be communicating with us saying, "Hey, you know..."
You just said that wasn't it. You said they can make a phone call and go.
For this, for the two things that are a component of this, to go any more than twice is outside of what this program is set up.
Well, the question I asked before was on a critical incident, you said all they have to do is make a phone call and they can go.
I assumed you were meaning for the two things that were written in here. Critical incidents are completely different things.
Because I said that I do not want them to talk to the chief of police or the district chief if they have a problem after the critical incident. But they want them to talk to somebody. Are you understanding where I'm coming from at all?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but if we've got an employee that is struggling with a critical incident, that's something that the chiefs need to know about anyways because we need to decide whether or not it's safe to even have that person out on the road at that point if they're struggling with. For the PD side of things, it's a safety issue. If I've got somebody who is struggling with a critical incident, you know, this could be a PTSD-type situation where they're gonna need additional resources.
Okay, cause you just talked in a complete circle.
I think we're talking two different things, I think's the problem.
So here's, here's my concern is that if somebody has to come to you for approval and then they know that their job is on the line as a result of it, now we're discouraging reporting.
Why would their job be on the line?
I, that was what I understood you to say is that that person may need to be taken off the road.
That doesn't mean their job's on the line, but I can't have somebody who's suffering from a mental health issue, you know, a, a significant potentially PTSD out on the road carrying a gun. That may be them taking time off. That may be a work comp issue for PTSD. When, when you...
But you say up here, "The department will see the bill for the appointment for the officer, but no other information." "The last professional believes there's an imminent threat of death or great bodily harm to the officer, someone else."
Correct, and that's a mandated reporter thing.
Right. So, um, what I'm saying is if we're not an officer or firefighter, has a problem and they would talk to like the city admin and get an appointment to go, the professional would decide if there is a problem or not. And there'd be more apt to go.
Thank you, lost me, William. We're, we're not the ones making the assessment that there's a problem. We're not, we're not making that assessment. Okay? If, and that's, that's the point. When you look at the mental health part of this, just, I'm not talking critical incident. Critical incidents are completely different things. The whole point of the mental health part, the two times per year that is written in here is so officer A, okay? Cause they don't share.
Okay, cause I'm talking critical incident.
Okay, but critical, critical incident is completely different than what the, the mental health.
That's what this whole question is about right now, Paul, is the critical incident part of it.
So when it comes to a critical incident, so we have a critical incident, okay? We'll, we'll use July as a perfect example, okay? Cause it's fresh. We brought in the critical incident stress management team, okay? In those debriefings that took place, the individuals who, who take part in that are given the opportunity for resources, are told about resources, places that they can reach out to, given flyers that if they're continuing to struggle with it, here are the people that they can reach out to, here's the people that they can go to. I believe, uh, one of those flyers is included with this. Okay? They're given those resources. Those resources through like Central Minnesota on the critical incident stuff, Central Minnesota EMS, those are free resources that they can reach out to. If they need additional help beyond what those people are able to do, they're, it's the employee that's gonna dictate to us what they do. It's not necessarily gonna be us. If they don't talk to us and we don't know about it though, and I've got somebody who's struggling, who's having bad thoughts, who's having suicidal thoughts, you know, if that's where a provider is gonna make notification of what's going on. So officer A goes down, "Hey, I dealt with this situation. I'm really struggling with it. I, I just, you know, I feel though, I feel like I'm gonna harm myself. I just, I can't deal with what I saw." They're gonna notify us, they're gonna notify the proper people to make sure that that officer gets help. What I'm saying when it comes to notifying us and the additional stuff is, as a city, we need to know if we've got somebody who is struggling with something that they have witnessed. So it's really a matter of, "Hey, look, I'm really struggling with this. Hey, you know, here's what's going on. I'd really like to go see somebody." You know, more than what this is. Then it's a matter of looking at what the city's options are, whether that's work comp or otherwise. With the police, that's gonna be one of the biggest things now, especially if this person says PTSD. Is work comp, PTSD for law enforcement right now, um, is a huge thing. I'm get, I'm fairly confident considering guys can medical out on PTSD. That work comp, if somebody experienced that, will cover that as well.
So let, let me ask you, I'm a little confused on this too, you know? My main concern is being sure that what's in here matches up, you know, so it stands up legally, administratively, operationally and whatever. So that, um, if say a bill from one of these outside services comes in, it's marked number 12, 152 or whatever, you would know who that is because they have gone through you, correct?
Either I would know or the administrator would know. Somebody, somebody would understand that, okay, what, you know, 152 was given to somebody. So it's not just some random person, so we don't have people just billing us.
So I, I think what they're, like, part of the difference, if you remember from the regional conference, the difference between the big bang and the slow burn. This big mental health chunk in here with the two opportunities to see a mental health professional would be more dealing with the slow burn stuff versus that piece down there about the cr- critical incident, that would be more the big bang and that, I think that's what the chief was saying, the distinction is. The big bang requires different set of tools, different set of resources than the slow burn. The slow burn is, is more of the, like the Plymouth, I think they, they refer to it in their policy as the checkup from the neck up. in their policy as the checkup from the neck up. You know, just checking in to make sure the ongoing day-to-day stuff is being.
What I'm saying is in the cri- critical incident, after it happens, a week later or so, if somebody's having a little issue about what they seen, they're more likely not to go if they have to go through their boss.
Right, and that's what he's saying, when they have that debriefing, like the kid, the.
It's in a week later.
Right, but at that debriefing, they bring resources and they say.
Let me throw, let, let's, let's.
Let me film to the legal person here. If I can, because, so, let's, we get two a year unquestioned. So I go in January because I'm gonna get it done. And then April, something happens and I go again. Now my two are done. But then in August, I respond to a scene where Dad threw the two-year-old down the steps and the kid is mangled and all sorts of messed up. Now I wanna go, because I'm, I'm struggling. But that's number three. And it's not quite a critical incident where we'd bring in a whole debriefing team for the whole force. So how does, how do I then go, I need to get help? Because I think that would, in my mind, that is a critical incident. That sets me up for more. So how do I get that? I'm not suicidal, I'm not a threat to anyone. I just wanna get that help that I think I'm entitled to under this policy. Do I have to go to you, or how would that work?
I would agree with you a hundred percent, it's a critical incident. The thing to remember is, critical incident debriefings are not about the whole department. It's about those people that are affected. It could be one person, it could be fifty people, it could be a hundred people. It, it, it's all about who is affected by that. So you see that, especially say that officer's got a two-year-old? Yeah, that's gonna mess with somebody. The reality is, would they need to come to us? Sure, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that would be something, you know, that they would at least say, hey, look, I'm really struggling with this. Can I go talk to somebody? I think what you're gonna see, this is such a huge topic in law enforcement, I think you're gonna start seeing people at cities and communities understand the need to take care of our people. You're gonna find that our officers are gonna be more open, especially when they understand that, you know what? This isn't a fitness-for-duty thing. This is a, my employer cares and they want to know that I'm okay. So you're gonna see those guys come in and say, look, I'm struggling.
So is there a way though, if I, if I'm embarrassed to talk to you, because you're my superior, and for whatever reason, I mean, great, we're instilling this sort of system where everyone feels open, and I think that's wonderful. But the reality is, I don't think we're in a society, I don't think we're there yet. So can we be better about making sure that people have access to something if they're not comfortable necessarily reporting it to you directly?
I guess to me, if the Chiefs are doing their job, if there's this critical incident, the Chiefs are gonna go talk to that employee and say, hey, do you need help? And what can I do for you? You know, it's gonna kind of flow down the line there.
But how many times have you been on?
Yeah.
And it has been, and we have it, but Billy calls you up because he doesn't wanna talk to the chief.
But it's the chief's job to go talk to him. You're right, I mean, it does happen.
I know it happens. I've got the phone calls.
You two have been on the department, you know, law enforcement here. I mean, not that they're afraid to go with the chief, but they're, like you had said, Sean, they're embarrassed. You know, especially, you know, with the mentality, not to put down the fire bar, but you know what, they're kind of that, still the good old boy, they feel it.
That's why it would be nice if they could go to the city administrator and say, hey, I need to get set up. If it involves something bad, it comes, you have to word it up here, it comes back to them. I think you'd get more involvement, is all I'm saying.
Definitely have a couple of options for them to get help without having to involve their immediate supervisor, if that's the case. But, you know, at least in, in my area, our department.
I think it'd be more open, because nobody wants to tell their boss they're having problems. That's my opinion. Everybody else has their own, and you think it's gonna work great this way?
On the other side, I think it does need to be presented to somebody in authority so they know.
Oh, yeah.
That it's happening. I mean, that's my opinion, so. And I think that's kind of how it's stated here in that way. So whether it's critical incident or, you know, prolonged slow burn, as you put it, I think it's still something that needs to be addressed if you're going for additional help.
And if you're wondering why I'm beating up on the critical instance so much is because if there's anything lacking right now, it's the critical incident. Or you can say the big bang. Because there's more than you'll ever know there is. And there isn't a firefighter I know of that doesn't have five scenes. He can't tell you exactly date, time, color, hair, anything. Um.
Because you have.
Huh?
Smell, smell. Sounds like a turkey.
Gotcha. And you might have that debriefing, but then it's over. And it's not over, a week later, two weeks later. But they won't go see nobody. They'll call everybody. That's how it works. And that's wrong. That's why I'm trying to make it easier.
Dude, no, and I, and I understand that, Len, I mean, that's the whole point of this. We're trying to get this to be less, you know. When I started this, you know, and I think Chief Goldstein writes in there about it, no, it's the concept of the bulletproof cop. We're supposed to be indestructible. To say anything bothers us is, is and probably has been, certainly in the past, viewed as a weakness. So nobody said anything. I do wanna believe in, you know, I do believe that times are changing. I think you're gonna see, especially in law enforcement, that that openness is gonna change a little bit more. As it becomes more of a social issue and more aware, and guys become more aware of what they're experiencing, I mean, I think you're gonna see it. I know a lot of people who aren't even on the departments where guys are committing suicide, that are taking that hard, knowing what's going on and what they're seeing. And what, it's taking those things to happen to get guys to understand the importance of opening up and talking to somebody about what's going on. I agree with you, it's on the Chiefs to say, are you okay? You know, how, how are you doing with this? And I don't disagree with you, Len, that guys don't wanna tell their boss. I would, the tough part is, and I know what you're looking for, the tough part is, I don't know that they're willing to tell their boss's boss that they're struggling either. Which is, which, quite honestly, is where part of that chaplaincy program comes in. Hey, Officer A just had this happen the other day. Can you touch base with him and see how he's doing?
So they should be able to, to reach out to someone like, that is set up within our chaplaincy program rather than the chief, you know. And I, I can understand, and of course, I come from the bigger world, military, you know, less personal relationships, and you, you've got other resources to, to go to in a small department. I can see where, you know, everybody knows, everybody, and they don't necessarily want to open up. I can see where it might be changing in larger departments where there are other areas or, you know, other, you know, venues or other contacts to use. In the small department, I, you know, I, I think there needs to be some other type of a, a route.
Well, and, you know, Len, you asked about where they go. The other part that was brought up back in the August meeting were EAPs. The EAP is different from what this is. This is a preventative, you know, the program we have here is a preventative thing. We're working on people on the front end. The EAP is an app to the back. So that EAP does have a mental health component to it. So somebody that's struggling could work through, say, an EAP program to seek that assistance without having to go to their supervisors.
I was just gonna.
Maybe it's simple. Alicia's been trying to.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out, like, on page fourteen and fifteen of the, an excerpt from the Plymouth thing, as the Employee Support Network, and I don't know, Chiefs, if you guys would be willing to put something together like this to include in your wellness plan, but, you know, it, it just lists several resources that are available, like the EAP, the, the CISM, CIA, Critical Incident Stress Management Team, stuff like that. And I think, Andy, you had mentioned, there's some resources through the State Fire Marshal for the Fire Department. But if you guys would be willing to include something like that in your wellness plan so that at least if there is, you know, somebody who might be struggling, they have those resources that they can access without necessarily having to.
So along that same vein, what if we treated this similar to like an IEP plan with the school? Where if I have a kid with special needs, I contact the school and I say, here are my kids' special needs, can we develop an individualized plan that's gonna work for those kids? So if an officer has a problem, we know it's in writing, we come to the chief, because I think you're right, you have a duty to balance the needs of your department. They would say, what do we need to help this individual through this? And it's there in writing that, or the purpose of going to you is to develop that plan. And they know there's a written policy that by going to you, we're not at risk of losing our job or anything like that. The goal is to better the individual through the resources that Alicia just talked about, or whatever else we might have. And just adding a line in there, kind of akin to those types of things.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with that. I mean, what you have in front of you was the initial thing I wrote up over a year ago.
Right.
So I mean, I, I didn't expect it to be carte blanche, oh, great, you know. I, I expected that, you know, it would be tweaked so that people were comfortable with it. I had no issues adding, you know, things in there. I, I certainly understand, you know, Councilmember Gilmore's the concern with people talking. You know, hopefully we can break through some of those barriers, but, you know, the program itself is all about them. It's about our, our personnel and keeping them happy, keeping them healthy, you know, physically and mentally. So, you know, if, whatever we have to put in there that we feel is the best thing to do, I have no issues doing that.
Um, turning back, I'm not Bill, so I won't pretend to know all the answers to this, but looking at that waiver, just my thoughts initially are, I don't know that it's going to apply for Painesville because we don't own our own equipment, so we're not looking at waiving a civil liability claim for injury. And I think that this waiver applies more towards a lawsuit for damages caused by it rather than work comp. So I, I don't know that this waiver would cover work comp. I also have some concerns about the language of the waiver, but I, I trust that Goldstein ran it through attorneys who know more about that than I do. But that being said, I think, like the chief said, training is part of the job. And unfortunately, sometimes officers and individuals get hurt even during training. And that's just something that we need to be aware of. I'm fine with it. My biggest concerns coming into this tonight were the chaplaincy issues in light of the opinion from the labor attorney. But in my study in the First Amendment through the years and everything, I think that we are more than golden on that. There are some ACLU employers who probably might wanna get up in a city like our size, but I think we're covered even if they do. I'm in support of this, I would just, I would like to continue the discussion we've been having to make it easier for people to report and get help if it's not in one of those very clearly defined instances.
Jeff, do you remember when we had that meeting with the labor attorney? Did she say that this didn't necessarily need to go through the unions if it was something that we were putting in place as a city policy?
I thought it was her recommendation that it did. But I don't.
I don't, I just don't remember exactly what.
I don't recall either. Now, we've discussed the different classes, and I would think that through the process of, as long as we've discussed that, that there would have been some weighing in already.
And then I, I know we haven't really talked about it a whole ton, but I know there is stuff in here for the EAP. But there's also a note in here about it going before the Policy and Procedures Committee, and I'm just wondering if that has gone through that committee yet?
Policies and Procedures has not taken this up at all. Trying to recall, we haven't taken up the wellness plans for sure.
Yeah, no, it was specifically related to the EAP.
The EAP, I don't.
I think it was from back in July.
Right, no, and I, I'm recalling a discussion that was had about an EAP, but I think that was from when this was first brought before the council. I don't recall that this was ever EAP or wellness ever before Policies and Procedures.
Okay, I think page eighteen is the email for that. So I guess, you know, I, in light of our conversation tonight too, I, I would still like to see the Policy and Procedures Committee look at the Employee Assistance Program.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I think the procedural issues are more of a question than, than anything else. I imagine that, um, the Fire Department, that'll have to be, will possibly be a discussion point at a future budget meeting with them, but in the end, it's the city that approves the budget anyway, so we just go to them for discussion and transparency. Yeah, my, my concerns left are the workers' comp issue and the individual tax implications of receiving benefits. And maybe more of a concern for the, the volunteer firefighters than anybody else. I'm not sure how that'd be handled payroll-wise.
Would there be a tax consequence if there are not individual memberships?
Still a benefit that you give an employee.
But how would you calculate the amount of that benefit if there are just, say, three or four memberships and not every firefighter is taking advantage of it?
Just nobody's gonna report it.
Where we.
Right.
Those are questions for the auditor, wouldn't they be?
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah, it'd be good to get those questions answered.
Well, and I think if I remember right, reading bills, I think as far as the, you know, it's probably just a question on the firefighters. The PD's already built into our contract as compensation to the city, so for the services that the city provides to the school district.
What would you be needing for information from me for the next time we get together as far as dial-in costs? I have not addressed anything with the fitness center, I haven't talked to them or even approached them. I've just approached SNAP at this point.
Could you do me a favor? When you go in front of the Fire Department, ask them who they would rather talk to if they had a problem.
If they had a preference between the two, SNAP or the fitness?
No, 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 a critical incident.
Oh, oh, okay.
Ask them, say, would you come to me or would you rather, or ask them.
Would they rather go to the city administrator or?
Hmm?
Yeah, would they rather go to the city administrator or to the chief?
Yeah, would you feel more comfortable as? Yeah, because you got twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five guys there. It'd be interesting with some firefighters.
Firefighters and all guys.
Close. There's one. But.
What if it were confidential? What if you didn't put a name on it? What if we had a form? And that form went to? That could just be submitted to the chief as well. The chief or?
Easy for, it's gonna be like.
I'm thinking like police, but.
Decipher.
I'm just thinking distancing it out, or the administrator, or sharing Policies and Procedures, or just somebody, and you've got just your number on there, and somebody's gonna know who that number correlates to, but maybe it's not the chief's, maybe it's somebody else, but they can just put in a form and say, here's what it is.
As long as it's fast.
Yeah, and then that can get approved within.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be clicking, because they need help, they need help, but they wanna. It's gotta be, it's gotta be clicking, because they need help, they need help, but they wanna talk to somebody.
Right.
Um, it's, it's gotta happen.
If we have a chaplaincy program and specific ministers designated to that, they most likely would be fairly good individuals at determining whether it's a situation that they need to see other people. Could they go to that chaplaincy program, ask for this additional service? The chaplaincy or the minister that's involved, go to one of the chiefs and confidentially ask for a specific, for an employee that's requesting the service, but not telling them who the employee is? And then get the approval for them to get additional services, knowing it's an employee of the Police Department, the Fire Department, but we don't know who that employee is. The chaplain knows who that is. And is asking on their behalf confidentially.
If you're talking confidence with the man in the cloth, isn't that kind of a written rule?
I, I think what she's saying is, it's, it's another person outside of.
Right, right. Boy, get that.
You could go against the boss, but I don't know.
Don't think about it.
I don't, I don't know that everybody would be comfortable going to a chaplain. I mean, I think that there, there may be.
All I know is I've been there and I know what's gonna happen, and it would be easier if it was easy and you didn't have to go through your boss.
Here's my position, is that we've thrown out a lot of good ideas, but I'm not a department head, you guys are. I'd be in support of whatever you think is going to get the most help for your people for each department, because you need to balance not only getting the most help from people, but also the needs of the department as well, and ensuring that it continues running the best it can. So I don't. My thought is that we're having some great discussions on how to get the most help, but I don't wanna micromanage it any further than we've done so far.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that I've got the, the absolute answer, but there's a guy that's gonna come to me and say, I'm struggling with this, and I say, no. You can't go.
Right.
I, I, I still have a couple of concerns about, you know, and we can come up with all kinds of scenarios, and what if this happens and probably, you know, ninety-nine of them are not going to happen, but, you know, in, in a small force, and I'm an officer, and I feel that, um, um, the chief doesn't like me, and I'm probably gonna be, you know, not in the, uh, force long or somebody, am I gonna go to him and admit my weakness, that I can't handle something? Um, mentally, I think there needs to be someplace else.
At least one alternative.
At least one alternative to go through. And, and then we get into the confidentiality things, and I wish Bill was here, and maybe Sean can answer that, but for some things like, is PTSD um, covered under workers' comp?
It is.
It is, okay. Um, and even potential city liability, that, you know, if, if, say, an officer were, you know, five years down the road, were to go, pardon the expression, ballistic or something, and, you know, start abusing his wife or whatever, and bring it back on, you know, on, on job-related issues and file a suit against the city because it was not disclosed or handled properly or something, but then there was no, no records, how would that, that could become a sticky issue, couldn't it?
It'd be hard, but with the way the law is evolving, it could be an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, hasn't rang out today, if the lawsuit were filed today, I'd say probably not.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, in five, ten years, with how this discussion is evolving and how we identify the impetus of some of these PTSD things, I think that's a reasonable hypothesis.
So if there's nothing in any personnel file that the city could go back on, to say that they had treated, you know, have done their best or whatever?
I honestly think from our perspective, I think having programs like this helps to protect the city, to say, we are giving you the tools.
Right.
To help with this. If you choose not to take them, I mean, there is level of personal responsibility. I mean, if all my guys say, we're not doing it, well, then that's, that's on them, I mean, it's on them.
The Plymouth one has it, that it, once a year, is mandatory. Um, what are your thoughts on that, making that mandatory?
That's my plan as well. I know it was written in here, you know, that the entire program is voluntary, but the once-a-year mandatory was gonna be, um, it was gonna evolve into that, or was, you're gonna go down, I don't care if you talk about how bad the Vikings are, I don't care what you talk about, but go down and talk to somebody, or whatever time, just to check in.
And I think.
Because then everybody has to go. Everybody can choose to share what their feelings are, or they can sit there silent for forty-five minutes, get paid to do it, and come back wherever it is.
We have mandatory safety training at work, and you, you show it up, and you can pay attention, or you can sit in the back and do your Sudoku or whatever, but.
But I think that would address some of those concerns about down the road, the PTSD, that, you know, we have made that option available. If they chose not to talk about something, you know, then it's their responsibility.
Okay, Andy's got a couple of questions to work on. You have four?
I do.
Which are?
Um, checking with the workers' comp claim.
Mm-hmm.
The tax earned income on W-2s.
Yep.
Um, just to note, the Policies and Procedures meeting to look at the EAP position, and does it need to go through the union? Do we need to talk a little more with the union? And possibly that's been done, and I'm just not aware.
Yeah, that, that could be, that's.
Maybe Paul knows that better than I do.
So I, I did get a call back from Angie, um, five o'clock this evening. I did reach out to her today, ask her about the program itself, if they had any issues, that sort of thing with it. Um, she said she talked to Luke, they have zero issues with this. They have, um, they never had, have had any issues. When I first presented this, before I even turned it over, I had consulted with Luke and let him know, here's what we're presenting, this is how it's being presented, do you have any problems from the union side? Back then, you said no. Um, so I did specifically ask the contract versus policy. Um, I don't know, I think she said she was gonna look into that. It wasn't, you know, what we've kind of always talked about was, this is something that's for the betterment of our officers, so I don't think the contract is a proper place for it, because that's negotiating your terms of employment, and people's wellbeings aren't a negotiating tool, in my opinion. Um, so I don't know that they, they're gonna have an opinion one way or another, that they're gonna say, yes, this should be in the contract, or no, it shouldn't be. What she did tell me was, they have wellness parts, you know, it's like we have in ours, you know, if you wanna go to gun club, whatever else. Um, they do not have programs like this in contracts. Whether that's the right place for it, that she couldn't answer. I will say, I do not believe that Plymouth is in their union contract. I believe this is a standalone policy within the Police Department.
Besides Plymouth, do you know of other, um, police departments that have a wellness plan like this in place?
I will guarantee that every chief that, uh, signed and signed on with the, uh, oh, where is it? One of the things that was emailed out to us, I'll guarantee they all do. So you're talking Crystal PD, um, oh, is it Savage? Uh, there, there's a lot of agencies that have these types of programs. They're all gonna vary based on what they feel the community, you know, fits for their department, but there are a lot of agencies that are moving this direction. Um, just a little quick backstory, this whole topic and conversation evolved, um, several years back in Obama's Twenty-First Century Policing mandate. So in that mandate, they came up with six pillars, one of those pillar, pillars was wellness of staff. So that's where this whole thing has been derived, uh, you know, kind of derived from, was, um, that presidential report on the Twenty-First Century Community Policing. So it's a huge topic in law enforcement, and it's a huge topic just across, you know, across the nation as far as it goes with public safety. So to answer your question, absolutely. There are a multitude of agencies across, uh, the state. The Sheriff's Office is looking at redoing theirs and implementing one in their agencies, so there's a lot of them out here that have this stuff.
Possibly a fifth one on there would be related to the, to the budget going forward for 2020, that we're covered with everything there.
Right now, we have, um, in, in two thousand and eighteen, Paul actually had six thousand dollars in his budget for this year.
For it?
Which, um, next year, he's got that budgeted at three thousand. This is what you have approved already, tentatively, as a budget. He's got three thousand there, he lowered that because of the Fitness Center offering that expense. And the Fire Department has a, under their physicals line item, where they have those physicals every other year, twenty twenty is a non-physical year, and there's seventy-five hundred budgeted in there, and there's a note from August twenty-seventh that Renee put in their wellness program, no physicals. So she had put in there seventy-five hundred for their budget.
What? Anything else? Screen just timed out. We're adjourned.